Okay. So we're ready to go, Mr. President.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. The Costa Mesa Sanitary District Study Session. What do we?
Do you roll call?
Yeah, let's let's do roll call.
Director Arthur Perry. Director Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Present.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
President James Fairman.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? We do, I know we do have some from Jim.
Yes, we did receive written public comment from Mr. Mosher and his hand is also raised at this time to provide comment.
Yes, thank you, President Fairman. I'm not sure how secure my connection is here, so this may be coming in and out. However, I did have some additional non-adjunct comments I wanted to make. First, the fact that this meeting is being held remotely, it was planned that way. I assume this means that the district headquarters continues to be closed to the public. Although that's not apparent actually from the district website, the only press release it has on it. Things are being kept clean and the public is welcome there. And in view of that, and in the fact that during the coronavirus episode, which is continuing, and especially today.
Hello?
What happened?
I don't know.
We lost.
Thank you.
I understand the motivation from that, but if if the headquarters is normally closed, having it additionally off limits for public interaction on Fridays may seem to some of the public a little kind of overboard. And if people can do that, the second non-adjunct comment I wanted to make is that there was an article late last week in the Daily Pilot about the Mesa Water District being fined for the FP.
For the what?
FP blank.
FPPPC.
FPPC, Federal Political Practice Commission, I think.
He's going in and out.
2016.
Jim, you were losing you constantly.
Me?
Yes.
No, Mosher. No, Mosher.
Oh. Yeah, it's got a real bad connection.
Yeah, I'm sorry then. So wow. That's the best I can do.
Let's continue to see if we can make it work.
Yeah, I'm afraid the problem is probably at my end, the internet bandwidth is probably not enough for this kind of meeting, so. Thank you for trying.
Okay. Thank you for your remarks and we will review those. Okay, let's move on. Any other pub- public comments? Code Enforcement Officer Report, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Turn us over to Ed, Ed Roberts to give his report.
Good morning, President Fairman. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, good morning, sir, and members of the board. Ed Roberts, I'll be presenting the Code Enforcement Officer Report for August 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, for that month, I had a series of five scavenging investigations that I documented. I actually had a sixth, however, that person rode away on a bicycle, so I really couldn't establish that as a full contact. These were conducted in various areas throughout the community, one on Colgate Drive, one on Maple, another on Pomona, and then two were over on Pepper Tree Lane to the rear of the department communities out there. I wrote a commentary on each with a brief narrative. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You had on the first part on your code enforcement and you give warnings. How many warnings do you give and do you keep track of them and or talk to them?
Ma'am, are you referring to the scavengers or are you referring to the? Pretty much everybody results in a warning, ma'am, as far as the scavengers go. I do have a citation book I carry with me that's more of a deterrent. But all these contacts primarily result in a verbal warning and admonishment, explanation of our policy and procedure, and then a request for the folks to return all the recyclable material to the cart they removed it from, or in worst case scenario, we'll just find a cart that can accommodate all the material they have with them and we'll stuff it back into a CMSD cart.
Okay, I actually, I was thinking too of the warning is that their trash cans are in view after the time limit, you know?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, I do chart those. These are all, I'll move on to the next section. For trash container enforcement, it was a total of 107 issued during the course of the month. Several of those do require subsequent visits to the property to ensure compliance. I do keep a rolling log with me of what's been issued. And additionally, it is charted through the complaint system if it's a reactive complaint filed by a resident here in the community.
Thank you.
My pleasure, ma'am. Does anybody have any additional questions in reference to the trash container report?
Anybody have a question? Thanks, Ed, for that report. We appreciate it.
My pleasure, sir. Thank you very much.
Let's move along to Organics Tonnage Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is just your standard monthly report on the organics recycling program, as you've been told in the past that this program is, this curbside program is continuing under the pandemic, COVID-19, that organics is still be taken to the AD facility and aerobic digestion facility for recycling. So this is your monthly report. You did have, did receive written comments from Mr. Mosher regarding this item. That's before you. Nalani, do you want to read that or how do you want to proceed with this? Or do you want Mr. Mosher to comment on it?
I can read them unless Mr. Mosher would like to comment on them.
Mr. Mosher, do you want us to read your comment or do you want to just say something?
I think it, with his internet problems, I think someone should just paraphrase it.
Okay, so basically, well, he's saying it's safe to assume that 995.82 tons of the organics is the actual amount collected from CMSD repayers. But that, the estimate of 45.85 tons landfill in the following table is based on a formula and not the actual amount landfill, question mark. I would not be surprised if some of the record ton is shown as collected in the early months of COVID-19 lockdown might reflect excess cardboard and other mail-order packaging materials being placed in the organics carts and not just people having more time to the yard. And he is correct that we are finding the organics contaminated and we are trying to address that. It's something that we can discuss more with the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee, but he is correct that we are finding organics with contaminated material.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
No. Is it more contamination or still the same or is there any way to know?
More contamination, what do you mean, more from years past, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean.
Did Bob freeze up? Bob rose.
You there, Bob?
He's frozen.
He froze up too.
Scott, can I make a comment?
Yes, yes, Director.
Looking at the graph, it looks like we're doing a lot better in the organics totals. Is that, is that how you read it also?
Yes, definitely.
That's good, that's good. So we need to have.
Yeah, but I guess it's, you know, hopefully maybe those numbers go increase higher depending on the contaminations, like I said. I know Nabil and Ed have been going out in the field and observing carts and we are finding trash in the organics and sometimes green waste in the mixed waste. You know, so we're trying to hopefully come up with some programs to change people's behavior.
Is that what the committee is working on, the ad hoc committee?
We'll be, yes, we'll be presenting that to the ad hoc committee, looking for some directions, some suggestions.
Okay, good.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. Does Mike have a comment about that? Mike Carey?
Yeah, I mean, we are seeing that. We're seeing excess contamination in the organics. I think that's what your landfill number is showing, but you can see there's overall greater participation in the organics program.
Yes. I think that's great. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Next item, solid waste diversion report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is just reminding the board and the public that this report has been temporarily suspended due to COVID-19. We are going to be talking about the diversion report tomorrow with the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee, particularly, you know, talk about the recyclables going to landfill. What is the processing center going to be open? You know, so when we, when we can have this report brought back to the board, but right now it's temporarily postponed.
Well, you know, if if CRNR is not paying as much, shouldn't we be paying less than we were?
Well, that's the discussion we're going to be having tomorrow.
Okay, any other comments? Let's move along to the alkaline battery recycling.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to give this to Nabila Guzman, who's going to be giving this report.
Good morning, President Fairman and members of the board. This year's the annual battery recycling contest has been canceled due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The district arrived to this decision because the Newport Mesa Unified School District, like many other districts across the nation, have resumed the school year with virtual learning and the actual school campuses are close to the public. Although there is hope that schools might transition back to in-person learning later this year, CMSD staff believes that it is prudent to continue with the cancellation of the battery recycling program to ensure school safety protocols are not jeopardized. In lieu of the fundraising opportunity that the battery recycling program offers to local schools, the district will be offering a different fundraising opportunity for individual classrooms to win one of three $250 gift cards. Through the district's partnership with Orange County Department of Education, CMSD has funded virtual presentations of the Inside the Outdoors program that focuses on the waste reduction and the four Rs. Recycling, reusing, rotting, and repurposing. Classes who sign up for these virtual assemblies will be emailed a student, a student take-home survey that they will need to fill out and return back to their teachers. Classes who have all the students complete a survey and return it back to us will be entered for a chance to win one of the gift cards for their class. The survey that is attached to the staff report and was developed by staff was developed as an effort to learn more about students' solid waste. More like their disposing habits as well as to learn if students are sharing what they're learning with their parents. The survey is just five questions and we are asking the type of service they have. We're asking if they separate their food waste, asking them to identify some HHW materials at home that should never be placed in the trash cart, and then one thing that they can do to reduce the amount of plastic in our environment. Lastly, we know that our community is used to disposing of their batteries at these school sites. So CMSD will be promoting the other free local ways to dispose of batteries, like scheduling a free door-to-door HHW pickup. They can take them to one of the four permanent HHW facilities. The closest ones are in Irvine and Huntington Beach and at the OCC Recycling Center when they reopen, hopefully later this month. This concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question. Is that going to be open to all the schools in Newport Mesa and other schools in the city?
It's open to all this. Yes, it's open to all the schools within our service area, so that includes public and private.
Is there going to be a gift card for each school or just for the winning?
Just for the winner. So we are breaking up the school year by quarters.
Okay.
So the first quarter would be October, November, and December. And then depending how many schools sign up for the presentations and how many of those return the survey to us. If 20 classes participated but only 10 submitted to the survey, those 10 will enter the raffle to win the money.
And who are you planning on contacting at the schools? What person? Have you thought about that?
No, the Inside the Outdoors does the outreach for us. So they are ready. This is a program that we have been funding over the last few years, so they already have contacts at each of the schools. The presentations are for kinder through sixth grade. So they already have contacts at the school that tells them this presentation is available whenever your class is learning about the environment, about recycling, they can call to schedule one of these free presentations.
Are they, are you going to be doing this program through the virtual learning?
Yeah, so the Inside the Outdoors developed a virtual presentation. So typically, they go to the school and take animals and they take a lot of props to teach about race reduction. So they did a virtual presentation that has a traveling scientist doing the presentation for them and it's very interactive even though it's through soon.
I'm not sure how that's going to coordinate with how each one of the schools are processing their education. Is it a stasiya, they're on a four, four program, they only are teaching max of four classes per day and they're going to, for the first semester, but they're going to give a year's credit, so I'm just not sure how that's going to work at the high school level, but at the elementary school level, I'm not sure what they're doing there, but just.
Our presentation, our presentation is only for kinder through sixth grade. High schools are not included.
Yeah, I know you told me that, but I just, just tell me what each school is a little different, like at a stasiya, the teachers aren't allowed on campus. At Crohn Amar High School, which is not in the city, almost all the teachers are showing up every day to do the virtual learning, but at the stasiya, all the teachers are doing it by home, at home. So I'm not sure what the elementary schools are doing. Every school is dictated by what the principal wants to see happen. So just for your reference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
There was a, Mr. President, there was comments from Mr. Mosher that was submitted to you. Basically, he says that the drop-off sites are are not an easy or convenient method to dispose of the batteries. And he's definitely, to sum up what his comments were, is he recommends us to continue with the battery drop-off stations at schools. Continue doing that. Just FYI for the board, this is just a temporary, the program we're presenting to is just temporary. Obviously, when school gets back in session, we will continue the alkaline battery recycling program because it is popular, it is easy to implement. But we still want to have that connection and partnership with the schools and we still want the students to have an opportunity to learn about recycling. So I think what, I believe what Nabila came up with is a, is a good alternative to the alkaline battery recycling program. And so again, what we're proposing is just temporary until we get through this pandemic.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think I agree. Thanks, Scott, for that. Legislative update, quarter three.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Gina Toronto has given this report and in this is also AB 3030, I think that was the bill that Director Perry wanted us to look into. So Gina will give an update on that bill as well, so I'm going to turn this over to Gina.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, members of the board. Before you is the third quarter legislative report. The last day for each house to pass bills in the state legislature was August 31st. So I'm just going to briefly summarize some of the bills that are currently waiting on the governor's action as well as some of the notable bills that did not pass this year. So starting with the notable bills that were passed by both houses, AB 685 would establish several notification requirements for employers whose workers have been exposed to COVID-19, including written notification about the exposure, notification of the organization's sick leave policies, and notification of the employer's cleaning and disinfection plan. It would also require employers to notify their local health authority if more than three employees are infected. And you may have heard of this bill. It was, in some part, a reaction to the Foster Farms plant COVID-19 outbreak. So it may pass in response to incidents like that. Next is AB 992. This would clarify how the Brown Act pertains to discussions on social media involving members of governing bodies like the Board of Directors. And so specifically, it would allow for members of the board to ask questions, provide information to the public, or request feedback from the public regarding agency matters. This would be permitted as long as the majority of members do not discuss amongst themselves or respond to each other regarding agency business. So it does provide some clarity to the Brown Act and it allows for more open discussion between public officials and their constituents on social media. And next is AB 2107, and this is a bill that was supported by CSDA. It would allow special districts to issue securitized limited obligation notes for the acquisition or improvement of land, facilities, or equipment. And the notes would mature within 10 years and they can be issued to a cumulative $2 million. Essentially, the bill would create a financial tool for special districts to finance projects through securitized debt. And next is SB 1159. And this bill would expand the definition of injury for workers' compensation purposes to include illness or death resulting from COVID-19. So this bill would establish a presumption that COVID-19 illness is compensable if there is an outbreak of more than 5% of employees. And among the bills that did not pass, there were several that sought to address the use of backup or emergency generators during public safety power shut-off events. These include AB 2178, AB 2182, AB 2705, SB 952, and SB 1099. Unfortunately, none of these bills were passed, but if you'd like to read about them, they are in the report. A couple of other bills that did not pass, AB 1672. You may remember this bill. It was one that we supported along with CSDA and it was going to require wipes to be labeled with the phrase "do not flush" along with other clarifying information about flushable wipes on the product packaging. So unfortunately, that did not pass. And then lastly, AB 3030, which is the bill that I believe Director Perry requested more information about. This bill did not pass, but it would have created a state goal to protect at least 30% of state lands and waters by the year 2030. It would have been in line with some calls from international scientists who have called on world leaders to protect at least half of the planet's natural areas by the year 2050. So it was in response to climate change and a loss of biodiversity statewide. However, the bill was strongly opposed by a coalition of commercial fishing organizations. They argued that the protections would result in negative impacts on their industry, so that also did not pass. So our next report, the fourth quarter report, I will have the results from the governor's action. He has until September 30th to sign or veto bills passed by the legislature. I wanted to note, Mr. Mosher made a comment about my report and he, he was correct in his comment. He mentioned that if the governor does not veto a bill, it does still pass, so I wanted to clarify that. That concludes my report for today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Good report, really good.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Thank you.
Let's move to item seven, updated with tripepi communications.
I think we have to do number six first, don't we? Jim?
Oh, I thought we, yeah, we didn't hit six.
Scott, you're muted.
Thank you. I always forget that. Yes, thank you. Well, I have number six. Mr. President, so this was a request by Director Schaefer to, on Jennifer's Discussion, and that is to have the board maybe consider, instead of doing an oral report on your reimbursements, expenses, or your meetings attended, you put everything in writing and then you put that attached to your expenses on the agenda and therefore you don't have to give an oral report. So in your staff report is a sample form if you want to consider this. This has been reviewed by Alan and he located it. So this is another option if you want to do, if you want to go this direction, is instead of doing an oral report, you just complete this form and attach it to your expense reports. We post it on the agenda and then it complies with our code and as well with the Health and Safety Code, so. Open up for any questions or discussion.
What's the feeling of the board on this item?
I don't have it before me.
Number six on the left side.
No, it's number six, but I don't have it.
You don't have it.
There's a, there's an agenda. Nalani, can you open up the attachment?
The screen is shared, Scott. Are you not able to see the attachment?
Let me see. No, I can't, I can't see it either.
Hold on.
There you go.
Now we can see it. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
So this is the, this is the proposed form to complete and then you attach that with your expenses.
Did you look at my, my report I attached with my expenses, Scott? Did that look, I didn't do it like this, but I did it by meeting date.
I did not, no. I mean, this is just a form. You don't have to use this form. If you want to write down your own, that's fine too. It's just trying to make it simple, to standardize, keep one form, but you don't have to use this form either, so it's totally up to the board.
Okay. I think, this is Mike, I think the form accomplishes what we need, what we should be doing and thanks to staff. This is simple and easy and again, we have to remember that if we have other comments, we can still make those at the board meeting. But this is a good form to use to simplify, simplify the process, so I like the, I like the form itself.
Anybody else have a comment?
Mr. President, Mr. Mosher has his hand raised to make public comment, please.
Okay.
Thank you, President Fairman. This is Jim Mosher. I hope you can hear me better now. I've moved to a different location. I'm using the internet outside the public library. Might be a little noisy in the background. I had two comments on this, which you may or may not have seen. They were submitted in writing. Number one is, I have no problem with using the form. I think it's a good substitute for the oral reports. But following the directions at the top, two things came to my attention. First, this can clearly be used for seeking reimbursement for travel expenses. But in terms of asking the district to reimburse you for the per diem, the Health and Safety Code requires that your attendance at the meetings be required by the board, not just something you're allowed to do by the operations code, but something you're actually required to attend the meetings. And I know some of you have been appointed. The last appointment list I could find was back from 2018. That might serve as a requirement to attend some of these meetings. But I don't think it's clear from the public who is being required to attend what. So I would suggest on the website that it be clear what the appointments and duties are of board members to attend meetings. And then secondly, and slightly, well, it is actually related to this. But the Health and Safety Code, that same section also points out that the Secretary of the Board who may be, but does not have to be a member of the board, has to be compensated separately from the per diem. The secretary is not eligible for getting a per diem for attending board meetings. The compensation has to be set separately, and I'm not aware of Coast Maysi Sanitary District having done that. So those are my two comments, which you may not have had time to see. Thank you.
Any response? Jim, this is Mike. Um, I, I'm a little uncomfortable talking about our process of what we're getting our per diem and, and the mechanics of what we get stipends and things for. This agenda item is simply to talk about a form. It's not to go into the policy about what we get paid for and who gets paid. So, um, if, if, if we need to agendize this at a separate time, I would prefer to do that. But to have this discussion this morning, I don't think complies with, uh, with what we're supposed to be doing with our study session.
If it's okay with the board, I can, I can, you know, submit, uh, Mr. Mosher's comments to Alan and get his opinion.
Uh, probably the best way to go.
Well, I have a question. Um, you know, I, I think the form is unnecessarily long. I, I would like to be able to report succinctly on the, the three, four, five, six meetings that I attend on a, on a one-page report. So I would respectfully ask that the report be revised, you know, the report form be revised. It, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't want to, uh, expend six pieces of paper, you know, for five board members. Um, and attach them, you know, or, or fill that, or fill them all out and then try to attach them or whatever. Uh, so I, I, I think it needs, I need, I think it needs to go back, uh, and be simplified. Or I would, I would ask that it go back and be simplified. I, I would think the name of the agency and the date and, and a few lines about it could be sufficient.
I agree with that. Completely. The meetings we go to are long and, you know, I think it's great to just simplify it and report on some.
Uh, any other comments?
I kind of agree with Bob. Cause the report I turned in last month was, I think it was the one page, maybe two, but it's, it simplified the things I did and what was talked about at the meetings and how it pertained to the sanitary district. So, I, I agree with Bob. We want to make it as simple as possible. And you still have the option of talking about it ordinarily.
Sure.
Uh, any other comments? I, I personally agree with what, uh, Archer said. I, I think, uh, you know, it would, uh, serve the purpose and, um, you know, uh, let's, I would be in favor of going for it. Does this require action?
No, Mr. President, just in some direction.
Okay. Well, then you, you've got the idea of where we want to head with this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Jim, President Ferriman, let me, let me ask. I keep, my computer keeps dropping me offline. Um, so what I would like to do is, uh, make a comment on, uh, item number eight. In, in case I get dropped off. And that, that is, you know, I think, I think staff has done a wonderful job of enhancing the SSMP. And what I'm more concerned about is, um, you know, we're trying to eat, why do we have to eat the whole elephant, you know, in one bunch? Somehow this has to be more systematic and more scheduled. And, and we haven't done, we haven't hired a consultant to do the audit this year. You know, there, there may be more, significantly more comments come in if the consultant does a good job. Um, and I would like this either be a special meeting or a subsequent study session item. It, it's a lot to chew on. Um, you know, I, I didn't read it until yesterday and then I was, you know, I was very pleased with some of the additions and but I think there are some, um, a, a lot of things that I either have questions about or need to be amended. And, you know, I think that's the purpose of doing the agenda report. But I think we need more time to, um, you know, to chew on it. So if I get dropped off, that, that's my comment about number eight.
Can I comment on Bob's comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd just like to say that I had agreed on this, hopefully, having a study session just for this because I thought it was so important that we have the understanding of what's going on on this. And, um, I completely agree on having a study session just based on this. It isn't that, um, the report isn't good. I think the report has a lot of merit and good feeling, but I'd like to see some of us be able to comment on parts of it. Thank you.
Uh, where does that leave us here?
So are we officially talking on number eight now, Mr. President? Do we?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what I thought we were talking about.
Okay, so, um, just to comment on, on Vice President Uten. Um, Mr. Vice President Uten submitted me like, uh, a, a lot of questions, uh, so I will address those questions. Uh, Mr. Mosher also had some comments and questions that I wasn't able to address because of the power outage. So we'll, we'll address those issues and schedule a, a special meeting, uh, so we could just focus on the SSMP.
Good.
Okay, oh, that'll be good. That'll solve our problem here, I think. Okay, anything else on that?
No, so we're going back to six again?
Number seven, update.
Okay, we're, we're through.
Update on, there's an update on the Tri-Peppy Smith Communications Engagement. The board's requested updates, um, on, on this, um, endeavor that, uh, we are on with, uh, Tri-Peppy, uh, Tri-Peppy Smith on our communication, um, engagement program. So I'm gonna turn this over to, uh, Nabil Guzman to give you an update.
President Ferriman, members of the board, at the July study session, the board received a presentation from the Tri-Peppy Smith team about their communications evaluation of the district as well as the final express communication assessment report. Since then, the firm and CMSD staff has been busy implementing the recommendations included in their report as well as completing other assignments based on the RFP scope of services to increase the district's communication efforts. Some of the items that have been worked on so far are included in the staff report and they are creating four social media posts a month. Since July, Tri-Peppy Smith has been creating a post a month to post on the district's various accounts, which include Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn. They've provided training to CMSD staff on social media metrics, utilization of HootSuite. Uh, they provided feedback and assistance with social media usage, content, advertising, advertising, and website vendors. The firm, the firm has filmed all four 30-second videos that will be used for the four awareness campaigns. The firm has also completed a one-day stock photography services for the district. The first one was completed August 27th and they were able to capture proper placement of cards. Um, the CRNR trash trucks, CMSD HQ, drop boxes, customer service scenarios, and mo, in a mall construction site. On September 2nd, CMSD and Tri-Peppy Smith launched the first of the four awareness campaigns. The first, um, month-long camp, campaign is to remind residents to only flush the three Ps. Pee, poop, and toilet paper. This will be a good reminder for our residents as well as staff of what is supposed to go down the toilet. The firm's currently developing a style guide, um, for the district that will set official colors and fonts that will be able to use on our website and outreach material. And the firm has produced a monthly metrics log, um, the capture statistics of our reach and engagement on social media. Um, I don't know if you guys have seen the three Ps video that launched last week. Um, but Nalani can play that for us.
Nalani, we can't get the audio. Well, trust us, the audio, there is audio to, to the, uh, the video.
Yeah, let me try this again. Hold on. Are you able to hear it, Scott?
Slightly, yeah, a little bit. It's still hard cut, it's still hard to hear.
Yeah, it's hard.
I'll go ahead and forward the video to the board so that you can watch it on your own again if you'd like to.
Thank you, Nalani. So that's the first, uh, video that will accompany our campaign. Um, again, a friendly reminder of what you can flush in the toilet and that flushable wipes at the grocery store are not actually flushable. The metrics report that is included in your staff report is a comprehensive report of how our engagement has increased. So it's only for the months of June and July. August is not, the report for August is not available in time to include in this report. The numbers for the month of June is, um, CMSD staff only. Tri-Peppy Smith's, um, help started in July, so you can see a slight increase in our number of likes and followers on all of our social media accounts as well as, um, the social media posts. So in the month of June, we, the district created 18 posts. For the month of July, we increased it to 67, which again will have a higher reach and engagement with our service area. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. I have a question.
Arlene?
How long is this video?
Uh, the video is 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Well, couldn't we take this to the City Hall at a council meeting and have them play it?
Uh, I, staff can definitely reach out to see if that is something the city will be willing to do. But Gina should, Gina and Nalani should have, um, or will be emailing you all the directors some talking points so that at your meetings you can bring up, bring awareness to, to this video and to this important issue.
Okay, well, I know I responded probably months ago when we hired you and said I'd love to have a one-to-one or have somebody else from our, as a commit, um, delegate, somebody come to, to talk so that we can have our input on it, but we never had any input. I mean, we just.
Yeah, if I can, um, sorry to share, I, of course, I'm wrong, Nalani, we, the staff did reach out to all the board members and, uh, no, unfortunately, no one really responded back to us. So, so we did, we did reach out. So we can, we can do it again and, and try to find some other dates, but, uh, we did reach out and, um, uh, there was a conflict or, or, or board members weren't, some of them weren't interested, uh, you know, but we can, we can do it again.
Yeah, no, I really did reach out and said, I'd like to have a meeting and if we have another director that would like to join, fine, have two. But I would like to have some input too and find out what's going on. And I did right away, but I never heard back.
Can I make a comment, Scott?
Yes.
Arlene's idea with the city council meetings is good because they have that the one Coast Maysi Minute, in that they do it twice a month for the city council meetings. And I'm sure Dane Bora, with the city permission, would let us put on our videotapes because it's going to be viewed by a lot more people than what we're viewing, being viewed right now. Just the thought force.
Yeah, I, I think this is, this is, might be an area where, where the board can help us out because there seems to be less cooperation on the city side when we're requesting assistance to get our information out. Um, they're reluctant to respond to us. In fact, it wasn't until Tri-Peppy Smith got on board that they, that they responded back to us. I, I think if, if the board reaches out to your, to the city council a, and suggested that, um, and, and, you know, encourage their staff to reach out to us, that, that'd be helpful because we're just not getting any, any, any cooperation right now from very minimal, minimal cooperation from, from city staff right now.
Who, who are you guys dealing with, you know?
Uh, Dane Bora.
Yeah, okay, Dane, okay.
Well, I would, I would talk to the, um, uh, the city manager and/or send a letter to both city manager and the, um, and the mayor. You know, requesting, um, requesting a, a better audience with them or, or, or just letting them know what's going on. Uh, I, I think this has occurred since the new, um, city managers come on board. Um, and I, you know, I, I expect it's her and, and not the mayor and, and probably not, uh, Dana Bora. Um, so, you know, we've got to have a one-on-one. I think, Scott, you should have a one-on-one with her and, and tell her what, and tell her what your concerns are.
Sure. Okay, good point.
And to have it come on behalf of all five of us.
Great.
Perfect timing before election.
Okay, any other comments or? Anybody have any questions? Uh, are we, I believe we're on draft revisions?
Uh, excuse me? Uh, President Ferriman, this is Jim Mosher. Is it possible to comment on this?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I earlier with a bad internet connection tried to make a non-agenda comment. I don't think you heard much of it. And it's kind of related to this item. I don't know if Tri-Peppy Smith was engaged to review the, the district website. And while I think the district does generally an outstanding effort towards communication, one thing that's lacking on the, on the website, on its homepage, is a clear indication of whether the headquarters is open for public visits or not. Uh, there, there is a graphic mentioning that there's an opportunity for drop-off of plans. But as to whether the building is open or not, it does not explain. And in fact, there's a press release, sorry about the aircraft noise here. Uh, actually, in the lower right-hand corner of the screen, if one is trying to get a COVID update, it says that the building is open normal hours and it's being kept exceptionally clean. So while our communication efforts are generally excellent in that respect, perhaps we didn't realize how long the shutdown was going on, but that, that could use some work to more clearly communicate whether the headquarters is open or not and when to the public. Thank you.
Good. Those are good comments, Jim.
Yeah. Anybody have a comment? Okay. I, item eight, is that where we're at?
No, Mr. President, we already discussed item eight, so we're just, we're going to oral communications of.
Okay, oral communications and director comments.
Uh, uh, let, let me ask, you know, my computer dropped me off. What, 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 what was the discussion? How did the discussion end? On, on the SSMP?
Oh, the, the discussion, SMP, so, um, I will, um, address your questions, your list of questions, and also Mr. Mosher's questions, concerns. And then we'll schedule a, a special meeting to discuss just the SSMP.
Ah, yeah, that, that, I think that, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other oral communications and director comments?
Uh, I have some. Uh, Scott, I just wanted to know that you, uh, had Lake Tahoe Ski Resort, that they're dropping the squat in it. Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that. I, I heard that, yes.
Okay, and the other comment I had, um, the state bu, uh, bill that seeks, uh, to end the si, single-family zoning. I'm kind of concerned how it's going to affect us one way or the other because that means that they can build more than, say, a one-grandy flat behind your place, maybe two. You know, and, and how are we budgeting for something like that? It's unknown.
Well, you have to have capacity and the lines to be able to do that. But the city has a lot of grandy things going in, um, especially. But the city has a lot of grandy things going in, especially on the east side.
So how are we, are we okay on this?
Well, I, Arlene, I think that master plan attempts to address that. The, the, the new, the new requirement for additional housing units and the potential for the granny flats. So the master plan probably should be updated if and when it looks like, you know, the, the development of the city is making a significant change, but.
Needs to be incorporated.
Yeah, well, it isn't, it is presently addressed, but it may not be to the extent, you know, that the present legislation allows.
Right. That's what I was concerned, that we keep an eye on what's going on on that.
Yep.
How it affects, you know, more than just California. We're coming down to Costa Mesa and then we're coming down to us.
Well, in the past, in the past, the city's been not consistent with their zoning requirements and when dealing with this kind of issue. I know, because I got, I got sued when I was in real estate by, you know, that very thing. And they, they were, you know, they were always changing the parameters of what was allowed. And I don't know if that's the case now or not. It probably isn't, but you got to watch it.
Yeah, okay. That was my only comments.
Maybe that should be a discussion item on the liaison committee. You know, expressing our concerns or, you know, it'd be the water district and sanitary district.
That could be an item that we could discuss at one of the study sessions or.
Liaison meetings. If we ever have a.
Yes.
Yeah. What would be appropriate, Scott? Figuring back up for something else?
Yeah, that's fine. Liaison meeting would be fine. Assume if we have one. Don't know if we're going to still have one or not.
Who's, who's churn would it be?
Well, we, we probably do some virtual, because I, I don't think we can host.
No, I know that.
We'd have to do a virtual meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, any other oral communications? If not, I'm going to call this meeting closed. So.
All right.
Be careful.
Just, President Ferriman, I just have a reminder for Vice President Uten and Director Schaefer. So we have a Solways Ad Hoc Committee tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, right, Nalani, nine o'clock? Okay, so, so for Director Schaefer and Vice President Uten, nine o'clock, Solways Ad Hoc Committee tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Say well.